Call the meeting to order. Uh, let's see. Vanessa, will you take the attendance, please?
Sure. Chair of the Board of Trustees? Vice Chair Fleming?
Here.
Director of the Board of Trustees?
Here.
Secretary Davis?
Here.
Trustee DeBarry?
Here.
Trustee Hatcher?
Here.
Trustee Lea?
Here.
Thank you. Uh, before we pres- excuse me, before we proceed with the meeting, I would like to take a moment to honor Mary Shore. I'm sorry to announce the passing on October 3rd of Representative Mary Shore, who was a member of the WCC Board of Trustees from '99 to 2004, including service as chair, I'm sorry, including service as chair, Representative Shore, who served in the Michigan House of Representatives from '92 to '98, and also served as a board member of the Ann Arbor Community Center and Democratic Michigan Women's Campaign Fund. She had been a student at WCC and a graduate of Eastern Michigan University. Representative Shore is survived by her husband, Michael, and three children. Ladies and gentlemen, we ask that you join us in recognizing Mary with a moment of silence. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I be heard?
Yes.
Uh, yes, I served on this board when Mary was trustee. In fact, when I joined the board in 2001, Mary was on the board. And I served with her, I think, for the following two years. And she was an extremely valuable member of this board. Her knowledge of politics within the state of Michigan greatly contributed to our being able to enhance our presence in the legislature. And she was, had a wonderful sense of humor, was a fun person to be around, and contributed greatly to the success of Washtenaw Community College while she was here on the board. And I mourn her passing.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I hear move, motion, and support. Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, as I indicated to the Chair and to President Blanca, I need to leave unfortunately at 7:00 today, and I request it as an accommodation as to whether or not we might move the action items up.
Um, I would support that. I would support also moving those action items up in consideration for the OPTs who are waiting our return anyway, so it makes sense for that if anybody else agrees. I'm sorry, did you want to have a comment?
Well, I, I support it, it's just that there are three sections of action.
Oh, okay.
No, we're just talking about the la- the la- the-
The last one.
The last two.
So, P, O. So I would propose moving the action items in reverse order, so we can do them in reverse order and up to the point you're, you're here. So P first, then O, F, E, C. So just in reverse order?
That's fine.
Is that, okay?
Oh, okay.
Are, are we moving those ahead of this closed session about?
No, no, we will recess for the closed session, then we'll come back and do the action items.
Can we get citizen participation at least before the action items?
Before the action items?
As a courtesy to those, any citizens that have appeared? Usually they're not that many.
Um-
Yeah, I would support. Why don't we do the citizen participation first, then closed session, and then hopefully we'll have time-
Okay.
-to collective bargaining, I think that would be great.
So we'll do citizen participation before the closed session, so that even the citizens can have consideration then. Is that okay with everybody? All right.
I'm good with that.
Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so the agenda has been approved. Next, we're going to move to approval of the minutes from the September 19th monthly meeting. Is there any, um, I'm sorry, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved, in a second?
Support.
Support, any discussion? For the minutes? Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we are now moving to citizen participation. Um, are there anybody?
WCC.
First, the WCC.
WCC has nothing for the board to mention.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Are there any public comments? Anybody? Okay. Vanessa, were there any written communications?
Yes, there is three.
Okay. All right, so, um, with that, we will now recess into closed session to discuss collective bargaining. Oh, I need a motion?
So moved.
So moved, second? Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, call the meeting back. All right, do I have that motion? I don't think I have the sheet in front of me. So we're starting with tab P, the ratification of the Washtenaw Community College Office Technical Professional. Do I need to read this?
Yes.
Okay, so, the recommendation that the Board of Trustees ratify the proposed three-year collective bargaining agreement effective October 25th, 2017, continuing through June 30th, 2020, between the Washtenaw Community College Office Professional Technical OPT Association and the Washtenaw Community College Board of Trustees.
I'll, I'll move that.
Do I hear a motion to?
I'll support it.
Yes, and support. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
I just want to say that I'm happy that this came to a resolution, and I just want to state that it does something that I support very strongly philosophically, in that by giving a hard wage number increase across the board, it actually decreases the disparity between the highest paid and lowest paid, elevating the lowest paid workers at a little bit higher percentage of what they were making. And that's philosophically something I'd like to, like to see throughout our community, not just here at Washtenaw Community College, and I strongly support this.
Any further discussion? All right, Vanessa, call the roll, please.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Director of the Board of Trustees?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarry?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Lea?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. All right, moving on to tab O. This is the change to the 2017 schedule of the monthly Board of Meetings, the recommendation that the Board of Trustees change the start time of its regular scheduled November 28th Board of Trustees meeting from 6:00 PM to 3:00 PM, and that the Board establish and hold their annual fall retreat on November 28th at 6:00 PM, both meetings to be held in the Community Room of the Student Center Building. Do I hear a motion to support?
I move approval.
Do I hear a second?
Support.
Support. Is there any discussion on this? Yes.
Um, do we have a, a sense of topic or agenda yet? Just a general, like, sometimes it's money, sometimes it's-
I think it's plan, isn't it?
Yes.
It's but?
It's, as you know, I, we're, you all know that Vice President Flowers is retiring.
Say you think so.
I hope, I know. I've tried my best, but he is retiring, and we are going to use that meeting to review facilities.
Oh, good.
In terms of the master plan, where we're at, and getting food, you know, feedback on that, any of the new, the campus, oh, come on, the, you know, I'm talking ATC, Advanced Transportation Center, and any of the other renovations, any further meetings?
And where is the Community Room?
In the Community Room, that way we can tour SC.
Where is the Community?
It's on the first floor of the Student Services Building.
Student Center, huh?
Student Center, sorry.
Oh, is that where they sometimes have the gaming setup?
Yes.
Okay, I know where that's at, then.
Okay.
Okay, um, any further discussion? All right, Vanessa, roll call, please.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Director of the Board of Trustees?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarry?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to tab N.
No.
F.
Oh, I'm sorry.
F.
F, I'm sorry, the action item F. I was already going, there it is, all right. Okay, so the recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the five-year capital outlay plan for fiscal years 2019 to 2023 as submitted. I will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Support? Okay, I've got support. Any discussion on this? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, roll call, please.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Director of the Board of Trustees?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarry?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Lea?
Yes.
All right, next is tab E. Receipt of the fiscal year '17 audit report, the recommendation that the Board receive the fiscal year '17 audit report as submitted. I will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
I hear support, okay. Any discussion on this? All right, hearing none. All right, roll call, please, Vanessa.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Director of the Board of Trustees?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarry?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so now, we go to C, that next. Okay, tab C. Financial reports for September 2017. Recommendation that the Board of Trustees receive the financial report for September 2017 as follows. General fund, deferred maintenance fund, capital fund, and combined schedule of investments all funds. I will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Your support?
Support.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Yes, Trustee Hatcher?
On the revenue description and the narrative, does that include non-credit revenues and expenditures or not? Those, the descriptions, the narrative?
The, the narratives do, do not, they're, the non, the non-credit on the, on page two is in the line "other."
Yes.
Yep. It's, but, but the narrative does not.
Okay, I just, yeah, I just wondered, you know.
Any other discussion?
Is-
Yes.
Pretty much every month you highlight a couple things. Are there any things of note that you'd like to highlight?
Well, certainly, it should be noteworthy for the board that we were up about 1, 1.5% in credit hours for, for fall, and that was about $420,000 as of the close of the books for September above budget. That was a tremendous success for the college, and I know in Vice President Blakey's report, you'll, you'll get more details around, around that. Property taxes, we are actually trending slight, slightly above plan for that, and we're hopeful that that will be a positive trend that will persist throughout, throughout the year. And then on the cost side, that our, our personnel costs are, are actually better than planned, about $670,000. Like last year, we had budgeted about 25 vacant positions on average, and we've been averaging a little north of 30. The large share of those were in the administrative area of, of the college. We only had, I think, two or three faculty positions that had not been fully filled at that point in time. And then a lot of our, our non-personnel costs are largely timing in, in nature at this point in the year.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, and is this roll call, or what is this?
I move we accept the financial reports.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, so I, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion passes. All right, so we go on to tab B, the personnel recommendations. Recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as listed. I will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Any support?
Support.
Okay. Any discussion on the personnel recommendations? Yes, Trustee Hatcher?
Ah-huh. In the, under Economic and Community Development, the Karen Newman is called a senior operations manager, is what that used to be? Yeah, but it's not the senior. Okay. And there were four talent development specialists, so now there are two? Is that correct? With Tiffany Banks leaving? There's still four?
Yeah, any more?
Are there still four talent development specialists?
Yes, there are still four positions. One is still vacant right now.
Yeah. Okay, good. Under finance, um, who does Robert Pierce report to? Michael?
Uh, Robert Pierce reports to Pat Hughes, who's, who's the director for Netw-
Okay, and that's a new position?
That is a new position.
Well, you're catching up.
Trying to.
And, um, under public relations, is that a new title? Where's public relations? For Kelly Campbell?
Yes, we had a position, oh, we had a person in that position?
Yeah.
That moved on, and we changed the title.
We changed the title. Okay. Okay, I think I'm ignoring the full-time ending employment under facilities development and operations, because I ain't ready for it. So I won't comment on that at all. Thank you very much.
Maybe we should not accept the recommendation.
I'm not ready.
I'd support that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Thank you.
All right, hearing none, and this is a, affirmation, right, okay. All, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, did you?
I do have to have some discussion here.
Okay.
I just want to note Damon Flowers, our facilities manager, is so well-respected throughout the community, and I know that there are a lot of people in public service and in other administrative roles at other governmental bodies throughout the community that will be, I think, sad to hear that he's leaving us as we are, but also happy for him that he could take on some new adventures. Uh, thank you, Damon.
Thank you.
You're here.
Okay, all in favor of the recommendation? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The motion passes, so since we are still in the report section, should we do tab D first? Because we didn't, kind of skipped over that, even though there's no. All right. Moving on to tab D then. The Facilities Development Report, speak of the devil. Is there anything under there?
Hopefully you have the updated page.
Ah.
I guess I'll just mention a few things. The deferred maintenance, we're finishing up the major boiler project in BE. Been sort of lucky with the weather, the last 30 days or so, not really needing heat, but we're very quickly getting to a point where that's going to be an issue. So we are finishing that up right now, we should be starting up tomorrow, hopefully, and finishing that project. Later in the report, or in the agenda rather, we talk about humidification boiler project for Crane Global Arts and Science Building, which is kind of significant to replace all of those small boilers. And the, the big project that's going to impact the BE building is the fan trommel units, of which we have to replace about 60 units, and that's going to take down the entire building in two phases. The first phase will be the second floor, it's moving 30 faculty and staff from the floor and moving into the building, and spending about four and a half months replacing these F T U's, or fan trommel units, so. That's a significant project, and that's off for bids right now. We had a meeting with the Washtenaw County Road Commission regarding the Simco project and the .6-mile trail, non-motorized pedestrian and bike trail, and that project is in completing design right now. We will be bringing to the Board on a future easement agreement, a public easement that will be in perpetuity. It's going to take about, little over, about an acre, because it's 10-foot wide by almost half, well over half a mile. So we'll be presenting that.
And where'd it run?
It runs from the corner of Clark and Huron River Drive to the Fitness Center.
Okay.
And we're trying to avoid as many trees to be cut down as possible, but we have some slope issues for ADA purposes, so the trail can be used by mobile and assisted-
So it's going to be like on the east side of Huron River Drive?
Yes.
Okay.
It's going to, it's going to be on the college's property, it won't be on the right of the line.
Okay.
But it's going to go up the hill, you know, the curve around near Morris Lawrence, there's a kind of a steep hill there, so we're going to create enough slope that people are able to walk and ride on without difficulty.
Sure.
And without cutting down the street, so.
Does it connect with existing path at the Fitness Center then?
It will connect to a path that goes west, just across from the main entrance, which ends at, just past the Business Education entrance. So it'll be the first time we've got sidewalks, literally on the Morris side. Ideally, if we had sidewalks to the south on Clark Road, that would be wonderful as well. But that's something we'll be talking with the Road Commission about, because it's something we need some participation to, to run, almost another half mile of sidewalk on Clark Road. But for those students who walk to campus from the southeast, it is difficult to walk in the street, the traffic is 45 miles an hour on Clark Road, so this will be a very good thing once it's finished. And the plan is to have this completed before the fall 2018 semester. That concludes Mary.
There's no part on that?
Is there?
No, there's no part on that. Any further discussion on tab D?
Can I just add a question?
Yeah.
Now, I didn't hear the beginning part, and it could just be that I just didn't hear you. You were saying the BEB boiler, did you, was that a, was BEB boiler, is that's in the building?
That's a major heating source. Business Education Building is one of the few buildings on this campus, other than this building, that has its own heating system.
So I did not hear you say a building is coming down, a boiler is coming down.
Yeah, the boiler is-
Okay, that's what I was like, what? Okay, thank you.
Boilers are being installed, the existing ones are down, they're out, and we're just finishing up.
Okay.
Ready to start up the new boilers, the next dairs.
Oh, okay, all right, great, thank you.
Okay. Continuing on the agenda that takes us to special reports then. So first, surgical technology program recognition, Dean Greaves.
Hey.
Hi.
Hi. Oh, we are just, I'm sorry, well, I was, I don't think emails are clear, so, so a surgical tech, we're, and, he was telling me, did you ask about the, I'm sorry, search check program?
Yes, the surgical check program recognition.
Can I? Is it Dylan? Okay, I'm going to work on that. All right, Rose, did you want to present?
No, you can present, but I just would like to just say this as an intro, this is the drum roll. What an outstanding job both Dean Greaves and Professor Elizabeth Connor have done with this surgical tech program. Now, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yes, I'm going to come up here, because this is really important. Elizabeth came in, and some of you may remember, we had some difficulties with the surgical tech program, getting it going and getting accreditation for it. Elizabeth came in, she got, within an amazing amount of time, turned things around, got accreditation for the program, and we just received a certificate for the college that she received 100% pass rate on our surge checks that sat for the National Board.
Awesome.
So this is amazing that she flipped this around so soon.
Where's Elizabeth?
So, yes.
There's a new program. Is that a good place by the coast?
He can Photoshop it.
Thank you. I just want to say, this college has a remarkable support group, starting a new program, getting accreditation. The last 18 months has, has been a whirlwind, and Dr. Greaves and VP Linda, they've gone through the fire. Thank you, Dr. Blanca, for just giving me the chance. When I was offered the position, I was getting my master's, so needless to say, it was a battle of priorities, so, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Next. Okay? Okay, moving on to AVP Snyder, grants awarded to WCC.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am here today as a result of an invitation from the Board to give you an overview of the grants activities at the college and the foundation, so I'm here to that end. I wanted to begin by pointing out that the college and the foundation worked together to prepare and submit proposals to seek funding to help achieve the college's mission, strategic priorities, and goals. It's really foundational for us to say that, because we're not out chasing dollars. We're doing things that are supporting what this illustrious group has said we're going to do, and what we're responsible to do. In the last fiscal year, in 2016-17, college and foundation received just over $6 million in renewed, renewed and continued grant funding. Just five years ago, we did about $1.3 million, so the activity increase is substantial. We currently seek funding from a variety of sources. Public agencies like the federal government and state government, private foundations like the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation, Amimic Foundation, others like that, organizations like the intermediate school district, and a couple of other quasi-governmental bodies that are put together to help organize around a certain subject matter, and corporations, whoever asks, corporate foundations that make sense for the college and our mission. I want to give you a brief overview of the new grant activities that we, we received, and new grants that we received this year, starting with the, our first NSF grant that is with the University of Michigan, that's being overseen by Dean Good and Professor Dentel, and that one is for minority participation in the STEM fields. We also have a second NSF grant, and that's to support the tech, manufacturing techniques for lightweight materials, overseen by Dean Tucker and Professor Tom Penner. Department of Transportation has helped us to establish our Center for Connected and Automated Transportation. That's overseen by VP Mueller and Al Leest, who handles the center. Then, we received another grant to expand our really great GED program, and as you know, that is overseen by Vice President Blakey and staff Bonnie Tru. There was also about $750,000 that came in this year to increase grants that we already have. One of them is the CC Step Program, which you have heard a lot about. That was an additional amount of money that was allocated to help us to purchase some new equipment. Vice President Flowers and Dean Tucker oversee that program. Jobseekers allows us to run the Michigan Works Offices in a variety of counties throughout the, the area, and that's overseen by VP Mueller. A small, a business development center also does similar work in small business development around those counties, also overseen by VP Mueller. In the third category, we received about $4.5 million in continued- In the third category, we received about $4.5 million in continued or renewed grants for a number of programs that have been going on for a year or more. Again, the CC Step Program overseen by Vice President Flowers and Dean Tucker continues and is a multiple-year program of purchase and installation. You can see that an important grant for the Youth and Transition Program overseen by Vice President Blakey and staff Liz Orbitz helps students who have aged out of the foster care system to do well here at the college. The Pursuing Our Dreams Program helps facilitate students that are interested in moving to U of M and adds for support for them to transition. Motorcycle Safety, that program Pursuing the Dreams is overseen by Vice President Blakey. The Motorcycle Safety Program is a popular community event, community classes, and overseen by Vice President Mueller. We purchase some vehicles and we also train riders. And then the Michigan Commission, M. Coles, Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards, trains community police officers, and that is overseen by Dean Tucker. We also received continuing renewed funding from the federal government that's passed through state agencies who make calls for proposals and we respond. Again, our GED training overseen by Vice President Blakey and Bonnie Truitt continues to get great, great support from the community, and it has been presented here as a great and successful program. The Perkins Technical Education overseen by Dean Tucker and staff Liz Orbitz supports the students in occupational careers. The Jobseekers, again, it continues to be supported overseen by Vice President Mueller. We also received some continuation funding to get our childcare program accredited, that's overseen by Dean Tucker, and that will help us as we go through accreditation in the next year. We also received some money from that committee, that group, to collect data on behalf of a state program. That's overseen by Vice President Blakey, as is the Michigan Post Secondary Special Population Council, which allowed our counselors to go to a conference. And then, again, Small Business Development Centers overseen by Vice President Mueller. We also had a special grant this year that was funding from the federal government that was passed through to the University of Michigan and then to us, that helped us develop and deliver Asian language, Chinese language training to the community, and that was passed through from U of M. The two programs of note, that program is overseen by Dean Good and Professor Juan Redondo. And finally, we received some direct federal funding that continues. One of the programs, the Youth Build Program from the Department of Labor, they did a visit here recently to try to assess what we're doing, we received that money directly as a result of us applying and receiving that grant. And then finally, a grant ended this year, we've got a final reimbursement for that US Department of Labor grant. So all in all, $6 million, broken down by three areas, renewed and continuing, the activity is robust, and I think we're helping to meet the needs of the college.
Do all the grants, college-wide, go through the foundation?
They do not. In fact, most of the grants, we assist in the writing of those, but those are actually applied for by the foundation on behalf of the college, but the college is actually applying.
Well, I mean, but, but there aren't any, any wild faculty out there getting grants?
If I could help it, no, but that, but yes, that possibly happens, it happens every.
Most of the grants.
Yes. We encourage every faculty member, staff, everybody that's in our community to work through the foundation so we can go after the best possible proposal, for the most amount of money for the best project.
Great, great, thanks.
The Small Business Development Centers in these, I'm really interested in numbers, well, how much money and numbers of who served, number and who served in these outlying non-Washtenaw county counties. So Livingston, Jackson, Hillsdale, Laneway, Monroe.
Right.
And the reason I ask for that is when we talk to congresspeople from the state of Michigan, I want to be able to go into Congressman Bishop, or who's the person in Hillsdale?
Walberg?
Oh, Walberg, right. So I'd like to be able to go into their offices armed with those sorts of numbers.
With service data?
Right. So we can say, look, you know, in addition to serving students coming from your area, we're doing this additional community development essentially with small business support.
Absolutely.
So rather than just seeing the broad where we're doing it, I'd like to know how much in each county, both in terms of dollars and who and how we're serving.
I'll ask Vice President Mueller to address that.
And that's something if I go again to this National Legislative Summit, I want to be armed with data like that.
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, the national summit is in mid-February, and we do see the legislators, so I like taking the economic impact statement with us, and I like taking student data to say, hey, you've got, you know, 200 students from your county, and it really does help the discussion. And we've also met with Kilby too in the past and other, from the Michigan delegation. Thank you. All right, thank you so much. All right, next report, Fall Semester Annual Enrollment Financial Aid Profiles.
Good evening. Good evening. This year, we decided to combine the annual and fall profiles with the financial aid profile. In the past, we've had the financial aid profile sometimes in November or February, and that's kind of out of context, so we've decided to kind of combine those profiles, and it'll be more pertinent for you. So when we look at these enrollment profiles, all this data is reported to the state. Fall enrollment will be based on the official federal count of October 15th, it was actually October 16th this year because of the weekend. And in your summaries, so first of all, each of you has a copy of the following if you 'd like to follow it online. And then in each of the, and then in the profile book that you received earlier, late last week, there's a profile sheet that kind of gives an overview in the back as well. So for 1617, we had 20,718 students that were enrolled in credit classes, so this would be the unduplicated headcount that was served, that enrolled fall, winter, or spring/summer semester over the last academic year. That's 28 less, so basically we're even with the last academic year. We had 7,582 new students, and that's also approximately even, we had a decrease of 35 students over the prior year. Our minority student enrollment for the last year was 31.7%, that compares to a county minority composition of 27.7. Our male students decreased slightly to 10,665, but on an annual basis, you can see our male composition is 51.5%. And you can see approximately five years ago, that male composition was at 50.9%. So if we look at the educational level of the new students who entered the last academic year, we had 113 new, a 5% increase in high school graduates. We also had a 23% increase in our GED students. So again, this is the academic level that they're entering the institution with. So again, with the success of our GED program, they're able to transition those students to the institution, so that was an increase of 42 students. We have, 55% of our students have prior college, so they'd either, 17% are college graduates, and then the additional students are transferring from two or four-year institutions. Again, annually for the last academic year, our students that were age 17 and below, which would be our duly enrolled high school students, increased 2% to 1,079. We also had a slight increase on our 18 to 20-year-olds, and also our 25 to 34-year-olds. As you can see, we did, had a decrease in our 45 to 59-year-old age students. If we look at kind of the mode and the types of classes that the students are registering in, for the 20,718 students that we serve, you can see that 63% enrolled in face-to-face classes only. An additional 15% took distance learning, our DL courses only, and then 23% took a mixture, they took a mixture of online and face-to-face, and that, of course, would be over the course of the year. Our distance learning, our online enrollments continue to increase, those, they increased 15% over 15, 16, so those enrollments are now up to six, over 16,000. And our mixed mode enrollments, which take a combination of our online materials, but the students meet in half-class periods on campus, those enrollments increased 5% over the last academic year. If we combine our DL and our mixed mode enrollments, you can see that we had an increase of, or they represent 26% of all the enrollments for the academic year, and that compares to 23% the last, for the last year. And of the 137 degrees and certificates that the college offers, we now have 27 of those that are available for students on an online basis. So for the graduates that we had for the last academic year, we had 3,855 graduates, and I'm happy to say that the number of certificates that we issued was up 30%, so we had 2,568. That's due to our auto awarding of those programs, and our associate degrees were also up 2% over the last year. And you can see, we've really increased the number of macro and MTA, Michigan Transfer Certificates that we've issued. So for MTA, we issued 939 over the last year. Our business awards were also up 25%, and our Core Business Skill Certificate, which we just basically approved last year, we already had 101 students over the last academic year who were able to complete that certificate. And our Business Associate Degree was up 10% as well. So in the, on the infographic sheet that you have, you'll see the first two columns are for an annual data, and then the right column gives fall 2017 facts. So that infographic sheet is really helpful if you're going and visiting, making presentations, that's kind of a little one-page reference for you to use. And I'll have Lori trap do the financial aid profile.
Can we ask questions on this before she comes in?
Go ahead. Sorry, that was not the plan, but we'll do it.
You're so flexible.
Okay, so on page two, you're giving us this number 20,718, unduplicated headcount. Does that mean there are 20,000 different individuals?
Correct.
So we're, and if we only have 12,000 in a semester.
Correct. So in a.
Then a lot of those people must not enroll in the next semester.
Correct. So over the course of the year, so for, we take, so students who enrolled fall semester, winter semester, and spring/summer, and we unduplicated over the whole year. Some students may have registered for one term, some may have registered for all three, but the students are only, each person is only counted once, so that's a unduplicated headcount. So for instance, in spring/summer, we'll have a lot of guest students from universities that come and take some, pick up additional classes. They may not be taking classes fall or winter, but that's a student that we serve over the year.
But it seems if our enrollment's around 12,000 in the fall.
Twelve-three.
And 12,000 in the winter, roughly?
About that, yes. And about 7,500 in the spring/summer.
So not very many of those people are going to both semesters?
Well, no, quite.
I mean, I have to sit here and do my algebra on this, but I could.
Right, so if we look at the continuing students, for instance, we're going to talk about fall in a little bit, but we had about 7,400 continuing students. So, you know, we'll have about 72% of our students from fall will continue on in winter.
So that's another.
And so, but again, in spring/summer, we're really picking up a lot of extra students as well.
So spring/summer is really adding.
Yep, yes.
And then one other question I had, on the, I'm looking at the annual distance learning online enrollments.
Yes.
Are those, is that number in credit hours or in?
No, enrollment would be, every time a person enrolls in a class, that counts as an enrollment.
So if I enroll in two DL classes, that's two enrollments?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, so you have, so you have each, you know, each time that someone enrolls to a class, that generates an enrollment, and then we calculate the credit hours by taking the enrollment and multiplying by, if it's a three-credit class, that would generate three credit hours for each student enrolled in that class.
And I guess I have one on the new students.
Yes.
So I've taken classes here in the past, but I haven't in the past, say, year and a half. If I sign up next semester, am I a new student?
No.
Okay.
You are not. New would be totally new to the institution, first time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, everyone. So the total, I need to point out one thing, in your book, in your bound book that you got with the profiles, the financial aid profile this year is at the back of that, so we're after the student profile, and there's a, there's a green sheet that divides the two, it's kind of hard to find the green sheet, but it divides the two, and then the financial aid, the actual profile is there instead of a separate booklet like you've had in the past. I think it starts on page, I wrote it down, 76. So the total financial aid that WCC gave to students in the 1617 academic year is $35,242,355. The number of students that we served in 1617, Bill Johnson told me today, I should say almost 6,700, so I don't say that number. And that accounts for 32.2% of WCC annual credit students. So in the fall semester, we give financial aid to 41% of our students, 41.3 in the winter of 2017, and then 23.3% of our students in spring/summer receive financial aid. Approximately $12 million of financial aid was used to pay tuition this past year, and we had an additional $1.67 million that was used to purchase books and supplies at the WCC bookstore. Financial aid comes from different sources, from the federal government, state, WCC, and external. For 1617, the federal, through federal funds, students received 32 point, almost 32.9 million dollars. From the state, $677,000. WCC gave students $700,005. And external sources, that's where the WCC foundation funds are, accounted for $974,159. And we're going to look at each of those in a second individually. There are four types of financial aid. Grants are given to students and they don't have to repay those, grants or scholarships, loans, obviously they have to repay in work-study. Grants make up $13.9 million of the financial aid given to students, and that's primarily the federal Pell Grant there. Scholarships, $2.1 million. Loans, $18.9 million. And work-study is $217,000. So this slide's pretty busy, this is the federal pie that we got, and this is for 1617, we had $32,890,000 in total federal aid from students. Like I had said earlier, the Pell Grant is the biggest portion of grant money, and that's We gave 18, almost 18.8 million to students in student loans, and the parent loan for undergraduate students, which is the parents' loan for their student, was $107,000. And then some smaller grants, the Supplemental Educational Opportunity Grant, Fostering Futures Grant, and Perkins combined is $261,900. Federal work-study, 65 students worked last year, and they were paid $217,260. They have various jobs on campus, the computer commons, the adult transitions area, some various academic areas, the nursing department, recycling center. We also have several students who do community service with their work-study, and they do that at both the Harriet Street Center and the Park Ridge Center. At Park Ridge, we have students who are helping children as reading and math tutors. The state of Michigan funding comes from two, the two biggest sources, the biggest is the Tuition Incentive Program, or TIP, and that was just over $600,000 last year. Those students have to be, are, they have to be Medicaid eligible beginning at the age of 12, and then they are eligible to receive 80 credits at a community college paid for through the TIP program. And we have seen that increase the past several years. We also have students who receive the Michigan Competitive Scholarship, and that's based on their SAT score, and they also have to fill out a FAS and have financial need for that. And they also have to fill out a FASA and have financial need for that. WCC scholarship, as a reminder, we help high school students through the President's and the Pracassini scholarships. Those are six full tuition and book scholarships for each public high school in Washtenaw County, and they're renewable based on academic performance. We also give students the Excellence Scholarships, and that's 50 scholarships worth $3,000 per year for graduates from any high school anywhere or homeschool students. So 457 students received $700,000 directly from WCC. We helped 129 high school graduates, and they were given $403,000. And also, 287 students received $83,000 for books. There are other WCC funds that are significant, and they're given to students that don't run through the financial aid office, but that I like to mention. Emeritus students were given $350,605. They had their tuition waived for that amount. We have students who work or have property in Washtenaw County, and we supplement the difference between the in-and-out-of-district rate for them, and that was $225,000. Livingston County students who take classes at a Livingston County location received $20 per credit hour. That amount for 1617 was almost $42,000. And then we have partner high school students who also are in that same situation, sort of as the work and property and district, where they are out-of-district students coming here, and we supplement the difference between those two. And that was $33,600. External sources, this is where the WCC foundation funds are. 684 students were helped by the WCC foundation. And that should be $709,000 to them, not 209. And then the foundation gives funds for tuition, books, childcare, and other educational expenses. And then we had an additional $265,000 of external scholarships that went to 179 students. And those come from various sources. It could be community or civic groups that give those funds to students. So some new things that have been happening this year and by year, I mean, calendar year, beginning in the winter 17 semester, the WCC foundation has started an emergency fund, helping students with expenses and things that come up that are outside sort of the normal expenses that they would have as students. We have funds for students and also specific funds for veterans. There's a committee of staff from the foundation, student services areas, and the cashier's office, who helped to turn eligibility for those funds for the students. So far, we've helped more than 40 students. We've given them Kroger cards for food and gas. We helped one student with a hotel stay after he had an apartment fire. We helped another student purchase eyeglasses, helping with utility shut-offs. So that's been, a lot of students are starting to be helped through that fund. That has been increasing every semester. Another new thing that I'm pretty excited about is student loan counseling. I've told you about our student loan counseling in the past, the entrance counseling, where first-time borrowers have to take student loan counseling. This is in addition to that. So we applied for, and we were accepted to be part of an experiment with the Federal Department of Education. We are now providing additional loan counseling to prior borrowers. The department's goal for that experiment was to prepare students to manage their college finances, inform students about their total debt and repayment options, and ensure students are well-prepared to pay for their, repay their loans. Half of the students are in the treatment group, and half are in the control group of the prior borrowers. They're divided up based on the last digit of their social security number. Students who are in the treatment group are required to come in and attend an in-person classroom session with one of my staff. We have online sessions through Blackboard for those who can't come. Students log in, and for some of them, this is the first time they are logging in, and seeing through the national student loan database their total amount of debt that they have. We then have, route them over to studentloans.gov where they see, okay, here is my debt, I'm going to log in over here, and here's what my repayment amount is going to look like under various repayment plans. So far, we have 1,038 students who have gone through the new loan counseling, starting in about July. We've done a very small survey that we just started in the month of October. Overwhelmingly, students stated the session helped them better understand their loan obligations. 60% indicated the session would definitely impact their borrowing in the future. A third stated they were not aware of how much they had borrowed prior to the session. However, the majority of the students are still not concerned with their level of debt. So we have some work to do in that area. We heard things like, "I wish I would have known this when I started borrowing," and that it was very informative. And the students are very engaged in those sessions, and they take away information so that they know how to log in in the future and look at their own stuff as, as they're going along. Okay. Back to
So for fall 2017, we have 12,390 students enroll, and I'm happy to announce we have an increase of 1.3%. We gained 159 students over fall '16. If we look at the average decline in Michigan community colleges, the decline was 2.1%. If we look at community colleges that have a headcount of 10,000 or higher, the average decline was 3.3%. And some schools experienced declines of more than 10%. We have, as Vice President Johnson noted, we have, at the count date, we had 101,858 credits, and that's an increase of over 1,400 credits and 1.5%. If I again, talk about the mode of instruction, 68% of the students in the fall semester are taking face-to-face classes only, 15% are taking DL courses only, and 17% are taking a combination of face-to-face and DL. As noted as last year, this fall semester, we're continuing to have increased enrollments on online classes. They increased by 815. That's 15% over fall '16. We also have an increasing, you know, so the DL students, 500, increased by 574. So we have close to 4,000 students who are taking DL courses. Out-of-district students increased by 370, 28%. And then our out-of-district students are comprising 38% of the DL students. Our dual-inroll students decreased slightly by 28 this fall semester. Our top five feeder high schools are Brighton, Dexter, Pioneer, Ann Arbor Pioneer, Pinckney, and Itsalanti Community High School. And those feeder calculations, we've adjusted so it takes into account high school graduates and also our dual-inroll high school students. And our fall enrollment strategy, I think why we had a successful fall semester is we've continued to have events that are bringing students to campus. Our express registration, which is a full Saturday event, we continue to be open on all Saturdays. Our campus explore, our WCC NU event was very popular. We've continued to do telephone outreach by a variety of offices. We also did a lot of focus on our continuing students and encouraging them to enroll for fall, and that resulted in an increase of 176 continuing students over the past fall semester. And we've also done texting strategies. We offered more online and late-starting classes to meet the needs of our students. Financial aid had a verification process that allows students, if they were picked for verification, to be able to do their verification remotely and text the information to the financial aid office instead of coming in. And this fall, we started a new initiative for FITIAX, which are first-time any college student. It required them to have advising so we could get them up on the, on the right foot. I'd like to thank all faculty and staff for supporting our enrollment initiatives, and special thanks to Kathy Curry and her staff for the data compilation of the, of the profile books that you have. And kudos to the marketing staff for the cool covers and our infographic sheets. Just a reminder, winter registration begins November 8th. So we're going to start cranking again.
I have a question, please. Earlier, you showed some categories of enrollment by age.
Yes.
And there were increases in younger people and a decline in, in older enrollments. So the bell curve is sort of moving that way. Is there significance to that?
It's certainly with the significant, I think of the younger students, there's, the state has really put initiatives in for high school students to be able to get college enrollment prior to graduating from high school. And we're seeing more and more high schools taking advantage of that. So certainly, you know, WTMC is celebrating their 20th anniversary, they were the second middle college. Now there's over 100 middle colleges in the state of Michigan, so the new legislation has really opened up those middle colleges. And we are finding that a lot of, some high school students are taking advantage of our online enrollments, even if they're not locally located. And we also have the partnership with GenNet, which is an online consortium, basically, that allows all high school students across the state of Michigan and their high school counselors to come up and look at four enrollment options. That partnership, we kind of secured this summer, but we didn't actually, we didn't even actually get any of our fall classes up because we had our stuff done, but they were a little, they were, this was the first college, we're the first college to have them. And so we'll have, I'm excited to see how our winter enrollments look, because we'll have our full array of classes available on GenNet for high schools to access.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think this is for Lori. On the TIP program, now is this, a majority of this funding here in this box comes from the TIP. And it's by right that anybody that is eligible for Medicaid at the age of 12 can, when they are ready to go to community college, can get
They have to apply for it. And we have found that the high school, well, even before that, right, middle school counselors and things are, are very good at knowing and getting students to apply. So they could, there's a window that they can apply between, I don't have that with me, for how, how old they can be to still apply, but beginning at age 12, they can apply.
With the Medicaid expansion that came with the Affordable Care Act, has that increased the number of people that are eligible for this? I would guess that it would.
I would guess that it would have. I haven't, I haven't heard that there's, you know, that direct correlation, but
Are we doing anything, and if it, if that money can be gotten by right from the state of Michigan, it seems like a good pool to go after. Are we doing any marketing aimed at potential TIP students, maybe early in their high school career?
I don't know that we would, who those students would be. And they have to apply while they're still in school.
Right. I'm wondering if we could look at, especially in our geographic area, high schools that serve a more economically disadvantaged community, if we could actually try to promote the TIP program in those schools and suggest that people look at the TIP program with a target of coming to WCC. Because it seems like there could be, especially with the Medicaid expansion, body of students out there that would be, would benefit from being able to access those funds and go on for post-secondary education.
It's true. And we have, we have, we host the high school counselors' breakfast, making them, you know, a lot of them are going to be informed of it already, but just reminding them to encourage those students to apply when they're eligible, so that they can access those funds.
And if, if you do engage in something like that, to try to market to regional high schools, to promote, to make sure people know about TIP and connect our, connect our marketing with WCC, if you do any programs like that, marketing programs, I'd love to have you share with me and other trustees, because I think that would be a really beneficial thing. And if you do engage in any of that kind of marketing, I'd like to know about it. Thank you.
Lori, Pell Grants looked like they were pretty significant. What's the trend with Pell Grants of a secure?
I hope so. Actually, an exciting thing that I did not put in the presentation is that, beginning in the 1718 year, we will be going back to year-round Pell, which means that students can't, typically, a Pell Grant student can receive a grant full-time in fall, full-time in winter, and nothing for spring/summer. Several years ago, we were able to award them for spring/summer, then that funding went away. It is now back again, in an easier way to administer, which probably no one cares about but me in this room. But, so we will be able to, so that will be an increasing Pell Grant amount for students, and that's really good news for our students, because we have a lot of students who are here through spring/summer.
I just have a quick question.
Yep, go ahead.
This is probably, I'm sure it's for Linda. Help me to understand, going back on page two, where it says annually, minority student enrollment is 31.7%. The male students decreased to 10,665, and I see in brackets, 51.5%. Now, I know you touched on what that is, but, because to me, it seems like this number is so high. And all of these other categories, is this male student group right here a part of these other slides that you made up for this decrease to be so large?
No.
Because it seems like
No, they didn't, it didn't decrease by 10. It decreased two.
Oh, okay.
So the total, so again, so that's, that 10,665
Okay.
Was of our annual enrollment, so of our 20,718 students that were enrolled in 1617, in any one of those three semesters, 51% of those were male. So in any given semester, the females are kind of running ahead. But if we look at over the course of the year
Okay.
The males are running a little bit ahead.
So, and I'm sure there's any number of reasons why they're, why that particular group is decreasing, maybe because of jobs or lack of money, or transportation, or things of that nature?
Right.
Or low GPA or something?
Right. So, yeah, so that, you know, we had 20, so basically, it was just noting that we had a difference of 28 students
Okay.
From 1617, no, from 1516 to 1617, we had 28 less students. We gained a few, a few females, and we lost a few males. So, I mean, those, it, that
Okay. So it's kind of small?
Really small amount, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I should, I, sorry, I would have
Well, no, that's okay. I just wanted to get a better handle on how this is presented, just so that I can be on the same page with you.
Okay.
So knowing that it's a small amount, I can, I can relax.
Okay, sorry, yes, relax, sorry. That kind of looks like, whoa!
Appreciate it.
They all disappear.
I appreciate it.
I'll lay that out definitely. Should have done, lay that out.
Two more questions, one to follow up with Angela. Now, on the minority student enrollment, I can do the math there, 30, roughly 32% of 20,600, to get about 6,560 total minority students is there. And then, it's almost like, I had to look twice, because then there's male and female are called out separately, but that's of the entire student body.
Correct.
Do we have a sense of the trend, male/female trend within that minority subcategory?
Um
Would, I guess I could maybe find it in here?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do that. Then the second question is back to Lori. On the people receiving aid, or the loans, here we go. The federal financial aid, 18, almost $19 million in student loans. And when you, when you gave us that number, you said, "we gave out." Now, does that mean we have to approve the student for that loan? Because it's a federal loan, right?
Correct. The student has to be eligible, and we determine their eligibility based on the federal guidelines and the regulations. And there's a process to getting the student loan. So student loans are an entitlement. We can't deny student loans unless the student is not eligible
Okay.
Based on other eligibility factors, so, but they have to, we send them an award letter, they have to go into their MyWCC and accept the loan, and then there's processing that my staff has to do in order to certify the loan, send it to the Department of Education, get it back approved.
Now, the reason, one of the reasons I'm following this, when we were at the legislative summit last February, there was concern from the national, people at the National Community College Association, that there were going to be new requirements, or that there was going to be an added burden to people, to our community college, or to the people that are servicing the are servicing these, or pushing these out, that we have to service them to get them paid back. Or that they're, they're going to be looking at or monitoring, are you aware of any of this?
No.
Monitoring repayment rates, or, not repayment, what word am I going?
Default rates.
Default rates. They're going to be looking at default rates and potentially obliging us to lower default rates by punishing us, punishing institutions, if their default rates are above a certain mark. And that's something that...
That has been in the legislation for years, that if schools surpass certain default rates, that they could then be jeopardizing their funding. So, that really isn't new. I don't think anything's progressed on that. I think it's still kind of a...
Well, it sounded to me that they were going to create a, more of an obligation on us to lower our default rates.
So, I think sometimes there's been discussion that, for students that default, they're, you know, like, oh, maybe the institution will start paying a portion of the loan that's been defaulted. I mean, again, there's always different kind of conversations. It never generally makes it into law, all the options are kind of put out, into discussion. But that's been, I think, talked about periodically, is that, you know, maybe the school should be paying some of the loan money. But that hasn't come into law yet.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
As I was looking at the enrollment reports, if you look at the one-year percent change and the five-year percent change for each division, they're all negative, except that the one-year changes now are less negative than they were before. So, I mean, they're still negative. I mean, each division is down a little bit.
On the annual basis?
On the annual basis.
Yes.
But not as much as they have been, is what I'm saying.
Correct.
And I guess that's progress.
It is progress.
Why are they, I mean, what, they're not, I mean, each discipline isn't down,
Correct.
but division-wise, they're all down.
Yes. A little bit. I mean, they vary a little bit, I don't know how much. But it is, you know, it's right, there's not any particular one division that's getting hit.
No.
It's been kind of sprinkled across the campus.
Right.
And again, I think, I think we've been very successful in terms of mediating those declines compared to what some institutions have done. And so, you know, I feel like we're kind of up, you know, kind of on a tick-up again, because especially with the way fall looks. Yes, you're right, fall, we did lose a little bit the last academic year, but not very much in the end, a little bit.
Not as much as we have.
Not as much as we had in the past. Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right.
I want to commend, while I'm standing here, because you saw the financial aid audit at the last meeting, and we, again, had a clean audit, and I want to commend Lori Trepp and her staff for, you see all the money they have to process, and they do a good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the apprenticeship program update.
Oh, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Linda, thanks for putting in the non-credit enrollments this time, I appreciate that.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me present to you tonight. As you know, WCC partners with United Association of Plumbers and Pipe Fitters to bring training to their organization for their apprentices, instructors, and their journeymen. This year, the United Association's annual, annual instructor training program was the largest program ever, and there were more than 2,800 people in attendance. And as part of their graduation, the U.S. Labor Secretary Alex Acosta was the keynote Since the onset of the program in 1990, more than 45,000 members, instructors, have attended the instructor training program here on the WCC campus. An August 2017 Economic Impact Study indicated that the year-round training results in a $7.6 million impact to the local community. In a separate contract from the work that we do with the UA, the college provides related training to the National Sprinkler Fitters Local 669. We've had that contract for 10 years, this is our 10-year anniversary, and more than 2,800 apprentices have turned out from that program. This year, we'll sign a five-year renewal, and the contract brings approximately $500,000 in net revenue to the college. This year, for the second time, the North American Building Trade Union's Group, NAB2, came to the college to have their annual apprenticeship conference. The keynote speaker was, again, Secretary Acosta. This group is 14 AFL-CIO labor unions who come together, and most of them are based in Washington, D.C., but they come to the WCC campus to work with us because of our relationship with the UA. So, in 2016, or 2015, I was charged with expanding apprenticeships at the local level, and in the areas of focus have primarily been advanced manufacturing, but now, we're looking at information technology and healthcare. Some of the employer engagement that we do for these non-union apprenticeships has been with local companies, most recently today, with Dog Mike Games, Bros Hatch Stamping, Hornet Manufacturing, Ilmore Engineering, and the University of Michigan and a couple of their departments. We're also doing employer outreach, this November 15th, we're going to have a luncheon with the ex-Department of Labor Apprenticeship Director, the retired, not ex. And he's going to be the guest speaker to speak to local business and industry about the benefits of apprenticeship. And we are also having a career fair for students who want to become apprentices, and who, companies who want to meet our students and maybe have them apprentice for them. Does anyone have any questions? Any questions?
How many non-union apprenticeship students do you have?
Yeah, there was supposed to be a slide in there, 69.
Great.
And so, that's about a third of region nine students, apprentices who are non-union come here to Washtenaw.
Are there any females, which I like to think that they are, but are there a good number of females a part of this program?
There, it's not just one program, so, it's several programs, but the overall number of female apprentices in most apprenticeships is about 15%, and all these groups, I think, are working really hard to increase those numbers.
Awesome.
When all these people descend on us, where are they accommodated? How many miles away?
Yeah, that's a good question. No, so, all over Washtenaw County. They would tell you that every hotel room in the county is filled with these, these guys, and they come back, some of them come back year after year. They bring their families for vacation.
Awesome.
Anything else? Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Following up on Bill's question, do we have any numbers on, when we have the UA, for example, on economic impact in Livingston County or Jackson County?
The, that study was in, on Washtenaw County, because it was done by the Ann Arbor Visitors and Convention Bureau, so, it was really on the Ann Arbor community.
Would there be a way of knowing, or finding out from the UA, maybe, how many of their members stay outside of Washtenaw County?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And surrounding counties?
Because I know that last year, all the hotels were full, and several groups had to move to Plymouth, to the Plymouth and Nova area.
Wing coming, sure.
Yeah, so...
If, if we could get those, again, I'm thinking of possibly meeting with congresspeople outside of our district, and if any numbers that could
Sure.
reflect favorably on economic benefit that we provide to some of the neighboring congressional districts.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the remarks of the members of the board of trustees. Anybody have any remarks?
Just want to say something real quick. Madam Chair, McKnight, Morton, and I attended the ACCT Leadership Conference in Las Vegas. It was really nice. No, we did not get a chance to gamble, I'm sure you guys are wondering that, so, but it was very informative, very enlightening, exciting for me, you know, being a new trustee. I can say that the main focus that I took away from the event was making sure that the schools keep track and exceed the HLC requirements. They mentioned a few schools that ran into some situations where their crediting programs or the school itself had run into some issues where they had to shut down. And then, it brought me back to what we are doing here at the college, and it totally exceeds all expectations, and especially for this new surgical specialization tech program with 100% passing rate. I mean, it's just phenomenal. And I feel proud, knowing that when I go to a conference, I can say, well, our school is not like that, because we got all of our ducks in a row, and we're doing the things that we have to do. And then, on the other side of it, just for us trustees, it's, you know, we're so passionately involved in what we do, we, meaning all of us collectively, in making sure that we have awesome student success, but it's a fine balance, because we can't get involved on the administration side. And very well put, because you guys are the experts, and we rely on the things that you guys present to us, and we just want to make sure that everything is steering and appropriated correctly in the right areas. And I want to say thank you so much for all that you guys do, because WCC is the place to be, that's marketing. But seriously, WCC is, is going places, and I'm so happy that I'm a part of this community, and I'm so happy that we have the board that we have, and I'm so happy that we have the administrators that we have and the faculty, because students are coming here, and whether they're young or old, some are falling off for whatever reason, but they do find their way back, and I'm so happy to say, when I go somewhere and I, and I have my WCC pin on, you know, I feel proud, and I like to see that to continue.
Thank you.
Yes.
Chair, I wanted to speak to the College Emergency Fund, which has broader ramifications than, you may be aware, at first blush, you've heard Dr. Blanca say that we are beginning to conduct student exit interviews when students leave WCC, and some of you out there with the operatives said that, I guess, I don't know all the faces well enough, but, and that's allowing the college to understand what it is that makes students leave the campus, and it's often economic, and that's something that the Emergency Fund can be quietly pointed to, to try and arrest that, bring those students back in to matriculate here. The Kalamazoo Promise, and Kalamazoo has been doing some exit interviews, some surveys like this for some time, and they have a body of knowledge, too, identifying why students aren't taking advantage of the Kalamazoo Promise. So, the Foundation and the Emergency Fund, and with the backing of everybody here, really does have some fruit to bear for us. I'm pleased to see it taking shape.
Thank you. Okay. President's remarks?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you, all the presenters tonight, because their presentations, I mean, they really work, and they're very, very dedicated, as well as their staff members. So, thank you for your presentations tonight, and thank you for all the work that you do. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to introduce you Stephanie Comey. I'm not sure if you had a chance to meet Stephanie. She is, Stephanie is our new Chief of Staff. Stephanie comes to the college with experience in a wide range of public policy issues and workforce development. She is a resident of Washtenaw County and understands and appreciates our mission and our value and our instruction and services. Her responsibilities will include serving as a representative of the college with elected officials, and maintaining or increasing financial support through appropriations, capital outlay, and earmarks, and also with community development, a community relations plan. So, Stephanie, could you stand so we can welcome you? Welcome, Stephanie. It's kind of nice to have the inside scoop that goes on. This week, you probably read in the memo that I sent or forwarded, that we were part of the signing of 15 colleges and universities for the American Center for Mobility. But what is truly amazing is that we were at this signing, and I, I believe I was the second person to stand to say something, and I talked about the, that a career pathway is no longer a pathway, it's really kind of like an infinity symbol, because you never stop learning nowadays. You just, you never get somewhere. And that's all I said, to credit the ACM, because that's really what they're going to provide, is that infinity of learning for people on the job currently. And this is the great part, is the governor stood up after me, and I'd like you to play what he said. But this was to the reporters, but he also said this publicly right after I spoke.
Well, this is great. This is, and I do this as a key convergence spot, not just for Michigan, but the world. You talk about mobility, and it's going to continue the development for our, and it's exciting to see these universities, and how it's coming together. This is about helping the next generation, not just learn a new skill, but continuing to be great, right, for their careers.
What's the state that we're coming out of, the center of, like, these initiatives? Is there, is there still some, any things that...
Well, we're still doing a lot of work supporting ACM. We're continuing to help line up sponsors and go through that process. We have a big event coming up in Montreal for the ITPS, Motocross will be in Montreal, so, we'll have a good delegation there talking about mobility and actually promoting ACM on the city planet, and all these activities for the rest of the world.
Worth being for Washtenaw County's economy.
Well, it's jobs, and that's why I gave a specific shout-out to Washtenaw Community College. I thought it was fabulous, so, I think they probably have the first mobility technician program in the world, the RIN, which is talking about how you can get more technicians in auto dealerships eventually, that can do vision systems, radar, radar, all the things you're going to see in Motocross vehicles, and to be the first people to start training them shows that leadership, that will lead to more economic growth, and it's been a breakthrough.
So, thank you, thank you to the board for supporting this initiative, because, you know, it was a vision, and when you have a vision and people start moving forward, you take a little risk. And so, I'd really like to thank you for taking that risk.
I'm already dying.
He's writing a commercial.
Okay, thank you. And I'd also like to thank, of course, the faculty, the administration, staff, everyone here that's worked on it. And our, our office at ACM will be open, and probably will have something there in I'd like to give some shout-outs also to some faculty and staff members. Chef Terry Herrera was named Chef Executive of the Year, Educator, not Educator, Educator of the Year by the American Culinary Federation of Michigan Chefs, De Cuisine Association. Also, our art student was honored, Justin Smith, who won Student of the Year. Our creative writing instructor, Joss Orbeck, wrote the text for the just-released John Lee Hooker, King of Boogie, a five-CD set packaged as a hardbound book, and his... And his set, this is available through Craftboard Records. Faculty member Tom Zimmerman has poems in the publications, Calif, all right, help me say this, Califragil, did I say that right? And the Ginger Collect. Mathematics Department Chair Lisa Rams presented her digitalizing Venn diagrams talk to more than 50 students and again to seven high school and college instructors at Victor Valley College in California. Part-time science, arts and science faculty member Kathleen Erickson recently had all three of her entries accepted into the professionally jury Art Town Art Show in Birmingham. And I'd like to recognize Brandon Tucker, just got back from Germany, Fulbright Award recipient, to study the German manufacturing and education system. But I'd like to recognize Brandon because he was selected into the Crane's Detroit Business, the prestigious 40 Under 40 Award, which was published earlier this month. So this is his 26th year the magazine has honored 40 metro Detroit professionals who have made their marks before the age of 40. So you might not know this about Dean Tucker, but he is a United States Air Force veteran and an ordained minister who serves as the executive pastor of the Greater New Thomas Church, did I say that right? Oh, good, in Toledo. He has a master's degree from Lord's University and a BA from the University of Toledo and serves on numerous local nonprofit boards. Thank you and congratulations, Dean Tucker. We also have National Manufacturing Day here, again, something that actually was organized by Dean Tucker and Ann Arbor Spark. How many students do we have? Over 111, I want to say?
114.
114 students were here from Ann Arbor Schools that participated in Manufacturing Day. And we had a mobility Square One event also on, at the college in partnership with the Square One Education Network where we worked with students from 10 middle and high schools in Region Nine. And we have a hiring for veterans and their families, Hire Michigan Vet Career Fair. And this is very important. We're really looking forward to this again. It's on November 7. And it's really, it's great to see that people come out to look for ways to match up veterans with career opportunities. Our Economic Club meeting, I hope to see, oh, I won't, yeah, no, maybe I won't be here, is November 9 and at the Morris Lawrence Building. So I hope that you'll be able to join us at that. That's, oh, and, oh, two books I have here. One, we have the book that Professor, do you want me to call Professor, what should I call you? Professor?
Doctor David.
Doctor David Fitzpatrick Fitz. His book on Emery Upton, everyone has a copy, as you know.
It's not autographed.
Yeah. Okay. That was sort of sabbatical, so thank you, David. And also at your seat, you have another book from the Hereon, and Chris, will you talk about this one?
You have the Hereon Review, it's an annual publication and it's got submissions from students, staff and faculty in poetry, it's short essay, it's art and photography, and it's won countless state and national awards. So that's the latest and greatest. And the mini one is an E-magazine that Tom's and his group have started. So that's a sample of the order.
Well, thank you. That's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, moving on to new business. Going to tab G, recommendation for new programs. AP Hart.
So we, for new programs, we have several programs presented. The first one is a Stroll Processing Technician Certificate. And then we have the Fine Arts Associates in Art, as well as a nursing program, that's a licensed practitioner nurse to registered nurse, so LPN to ORN Associate and Applied Sciences. And then there are four articulation agreements that are listed, covering the nursing area, photography, as well as graphic design, and just a basic one with Indiana-Wesleyan University. So there's a variety of programs here. Are there any questions or?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Trustee DeVardy, would you like to say something?
We have such tremendous faculty in the fine arts area. And this is something that I felt was a shortcoming, that we didn't offer an associate's degree in this. I've personally taken a number of classes. I'm amazed by the talent of the students. And we've seen, presented here, awards that have been won at the state level. And I guess annually now there's a display in the student center and you could see the range of work. I've been in classes where people that have a graduate, have a degree or a graduate degree come in to our drawing classes to get a drawing knowledge so they can go on to a new graduate level program at another university somewhere. So I think we have a tremendous program. I'm really happy to see this. It's, I didn't want to say anything because it felt too close to the kinds of things I advocate for.
Belinda McGuire is also here this evening, instructor in the arts program. Thank you, Belinda.
Go ahead. I just wonder how, do we contact, for instance, Indiana Wesleyan University? Or do they find out about us? Or how does that happen?
That was an odd one. They actually contacted us with a draft agreement already put together. So in some instances, we'll contact schools, but that was one where they actually contacted us.
Okay.
And I will note that the Stroll Processing Technician Program is a program that Elizabeth Connor has since developed in the short time that she's been here, as well as, you know, fixing the other program that she got an award for earlier today. So we're happy to see more health programs in that area.
Could I?
Yes.
I don't want to, just because I'm so close to the drawing and painting programs, these articulation agreements for photography and graphic design are also vital for people that are interested in the arts. And those awards that we win at the state level in art frequently are won by people that are attending our photography classes and graphic design classes. So those are great programs as well.
And in those areas, the articulation agreements are very helpful, even in our own enrollment. So you'll notice that graphic design, the articulation agreements have been very helpful to our enrollment here and you'll see that in the student profile this fall.
All right, moving on to tab H, recommendation to discontinue a program.
Shouldn't we, do we need to vote on that?
No, this is just discussion stuff, new business. All right.
So we have one program here, the Honors in Liberal Arts, that we are presenting to be discontinued effective fall 2018. And the students who have not completed this program, which there aren't many, will have an opportunity to move to the Liberal Arts AA program. It was a program that was probably a little bit more niche than what it should have been to capture a good population of students. And so we're going to address these needs in a different kind of way.
I mean, we have the honors for students anyway.
Right, absolutely.
I sort of, I think that I'm not an honors fan, so I'm glad to see this couple, let's put it that way.
Okay. Moving on to tab I, the Adobe Software License.
Great, thank you. You have a recommendation for the renewal of our annual Adobe contract. As the memo outlines, the college has used Adobe software both in the classroom and through administrative support for years, going back to the 90s. It is significantly growing in both areas of use. Adobe most recently changed their pricing model. It's like buying a car. You have different option packages and they do a wonderful job of pricing accordingly for that. There is no discount pricing, there's no bidding process really, and I've included the letter from Adobe that says that basically it's our price and our price only. You can go through one of our authorized fulfillment agents to acquire it, but you will still pay the same price no matter which agent that you go with. They did offer us a three-year guaranteed locked price at the same price. So we thought we would make the recommendation to the board that we do engage for three years, take advantage of that locked price, and that's the recommendation.
Go ahead, if I may. So are there three-year contracts? So is this higher or lower than what we're currently paying?
Currently, we pay, last week paid about $56,000. So it's gone up into the mid-60s to upper $60,000 range per year. And the authorization I'm asking for, for the board, is a little bit of latitude above that amount because the number of licenses seems to grow each year, especially as we push it through the classroom use. And so I wanted to give us a little bit of latitude that as that use grows, that we'd be able to do it. So it's about, about a seven to eight percent increase over the prior year alone. And then there's an increase in number of licenses accordingly.
Okay. So we use, obviously, because I'm looking at the art side, graphic side, photography, video, communication, web design, and Adobe provides all of these other programs to facilitate these different categories here?
Yes.
And those are the licenses that you're talking about?
We have two kinds of licenses, what's called the Creative Cloud License. And these particular programs leverage that, Creative Cloud. We also have a number of other labs. The Commons area also has that Creative Cloud. So there's about 330 licenses just to support labs and classrooms with that Creative Cloud. And that's a much more expensive license than the basic Adobe products that's used throughout the college for administrative uses.
Okay, thank you.
A little approval?
Well, this is just discussion this week, so we're good.
Just a quick question. I'm assuming the Washtenaw Voice is part of the places they use Adobe?
Yeah, they get the standard computer support, I think, from the college, right?
There is a faculty committee, IT committee, have they been involved in developing this proposal?
We had made, we had gotten recommendations from all the chairs of the programs as to what their needs were. And so Kim Tom is the Director of User Support, so Kim has been in direct communication with all those areas.
Okay, any other questions on this? All right, moving on to tab J, Temperature Control System.
This discussion item is to replace some of our existing temperature control panels, migrating them to newer panels because they're proprietary, they're made by Siemens. In some cases, these are original panels when buildings were constructed, including this building, ML, Crane Liberal Arts and Science, BEB, and TNI have some of the older panels. So what happens is Siemens, after a panel is retired, will continue to service a panel for at least seven years. After that point, they stop even providing service for that panel. So this would be, I guess, an analogy of, we're still running in some buildings on Windows XP. And these panels are really the brains, they really control the air and humidity and outdoor air and a lot of sensors in all the spaces in various buildings, so.
High timed upgrade.
Yes. Where we have in the buildings like Gundern and later buildings, we have newer panels, but we'd like to replace these with the current state-of-the-art PXC panels by Siemens. And we're sort of running a risk not to do this because, because they're not serviced and we can't get parts, should we have a catastrophic failure of one of these panels, we would not be able to control the temperature in certain parts of the building. So this is kind of a must-need item that we need to replace. And it is on our deferred maintenance master list of projects to complete.
Any questions? Go ahead.
If I can still talk, I'm not sure. This one and the next one are really important to faculty, the humidity in classrooms, if everybody's talking a lot. Not that I talk a lot, but it's very important. People get really ill if the humidity isn't right in classrooms, but it's very important. So, thank you.
Moving on to tab K, the Crane Liberal Arts and Science Humidification Boiler.
Again, this is a end-of-service life issue. So we have four air handling units in that building that have humidification boilers that provide humidity. Humidity helps us lower actually temperature, it obviously increases moisture in the air during the winter, and so it's critical that we have these operations. So these four humidification boilers are at the end of their service life and need to be replaced. They are on our deferred maintenance list. We did anticipate replacing them and we did bid them. I'll have that bid information at the next meeting for the board to review.
Yes.
David, are these several measures proactive or reactive?
You don't want to replace things that you don't need to replace, but you also don't want to go so far that you have catastrophic failure and have to have an emergency replacement. So they're, you know, they're at the end of their life. Unit number, air handling unit number seven is nearly 15 years old, the others are 20-plus years old. So we know where the useful line of range is for this piece of equipment. And so we are being proactive, they haven't failed, but we know they're at the end, they're getting close. Because we can look at the scale and the amount of, because a lot of water runs through these units and so the coils are beginning to corrode and we're having trouble, more trouble to maintain, so we know they're at the end. Yes, it is.
Any other questions? Okay. Then moving on to tab L, Business Education Building Fan.
Spoke a little bit about this one earlier in the facilities development report. This is kind of, this is a major project. We have 63 fan terminal units. And what these fan terminal units do, basically they control the space temperature, the volume of air that's in the space. And they have motors and they have cooling coils. And they basically kind of localize the airflow in the various spaces, classrooms, labs, offices. They're various sizes. And we have to basically tear up the ceiling to get to them. So obviously, we can't have the space occupied, which is why we're going to move faculty and route the classrooms and labs to other buildings for the winter semester. And we'll do the second floor between January and April and do the first floor between early May and the end of July.
Okay. Okay. That's the plan. Just real quick, if I may. So then you're hoping that with the approval from the board to go ahead, you also are looking to have the other two tabs that we just discussed to be a part of this as well?
Humidification boilers are in a different building.
Oh, okay. But could, are you looking to have them all done simultaneously? You know, like doing a multitask, get this done, get this done all at the same timeframe?
Well, we'll say this, the contractor who is performing the work for the building boiler replacement that we're about to bring online in the next couple of days, did bid the humidification boilers. And so from an economy of scale, they're going to be awarded the humidification boiler and they did lower their pricing because they're now getting both, both projects.
All right, cool. Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, moving on to tab M, the Police Academy Equipment Upgrades.
Good evening. Forrest.
For you today, no recommendation or discussion to upgrade our existing Police Academy firing range. It was originally started in 1990, and saw a computerized upgrade in 2000. And while we do annual maintenance, it is now a, over two decades, it needs to be upgraded. Most specifically are the targets, as well as all of the catapult involves with each lane. We of course have 10 lanes, are barely used with our Police Academy, our Corrections Academy, presently running the PA through 30 Academy, as well as our regional law enforcement community uses it on a regular basis, some 60 to 70 days last year, but they of course have almost done that this year, that they have came and used it to do training. So this upgrade was a recommendation of our Academic Advisory Committee, based upon, of course, some of the maintenance issues that we consistently had, but to also put us on par with other community colleges in the region who have newer ranges to ensure that our students are training on, you know, the most recent types of equipment. So we're of course asking for the board's support as we try to upgrade this equipment.
Any questions? Yeah?
I'd just like to be reassured that the targets used at the firing range are gender and race neutral, because that rumor goes around all the time.
They are, and they will continue to be.
Thank you.
Is, how much, I'm assuming there's a revenue aspect to this police training program? How much revenue does that bring in?
Yeah, well, with Police Academy, of course, they're paying tuition, as well as some additional fees to cover uniforms and external fitness requirements that we have off-site. But a traditional person's in district is going to pay between $5,000 and $5,500 a year for that particular training for the Police Academy. But then we also do have revenue gained from the law enforcement community. So each time they use it, it's billed on an hourly basis, and that, of course, is captured revenue as well. I will tell you, with the increased usage, as well as the number of types of academies we run, we have increased that revenue significantly last fiscal year to this year.
Okay, that's all, sounds good. What's the number? How much money comes in on this? Do we generate with this?
Are you talking about tuition revenue, or are you talking about police revenue? Because those are two different parts.
Both of them.
Yeah, I can't get you to.
Very sad.
We can probably get you that number. I do know, for example, last fiscal year, for just the use of the range, we run it $36,000. And that was just ready on the range and its hourly rate. But there is, of course, extensive use throughout the academies that we run for our students.
And I can just speak to the tuition revenue, last year, it was about $100,000 for tuition revenue.
And when we rent the range out, there's, we have costs to that too, right? So there's, as well as a revenue generator, it's a cost in operating, operational cost? And this is part of fixed costs?
Yeah.
Is putting this in?
So yes, there's a full-time rent structure that, of course, supports both the academic academies that we do, as well as the rentals. So, you know, he is here all the time, but that is a fixed cost.
Did you have a question?
I have a question. Are there comparable ranges around here, Brandon?
There are. So there is a private range at Ann Arbor Arms that, of course, a lot of individuals and some law enforcement agencies use presently. We are the go-to as it relates to our regional law enforcement community because it's close. And we believe that there will be an increased usage for this upgrade because of enhancements that we're not presently able to do, that Ann Arbor Arms or, say, School Craft, for example, is able to provide those agencies.
Good dear.
Mr. DeVarty?
In addition to the tuition of our students and the law enforcement agencies that rent the space, do private individuals have access to the space?
At this time, at this time, no, it's only, it's only limited to those who are in our academies or training programs, or those who come in with it, who are part of law enforcement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last but not least, Tab N, renaming the campus building.
Yes, one of the highest honors that a board could bestow upon anyone is to name a campus building in their name. And you have, I've written something here about Damon Flowers, who has been with us for over 23 years. And if anyone on this campus, in the history of this campus, ever had, should have their name on a building, it's some individual who's built them and who's maintained them. And Damon, as, when you read this, you'll see the number of buildings as he's overseen, when, the construction, as well as the grounds, the maintenance. And when he was hired, it was only 600,000 square feet, am I right?
Yes.
And now it's 1.2 million on the campus grounds. So what I'm asking the board is for you to consider naming the facilities building the Damon Flowers. Is it Damon Flowers, is their initial?
Yes.
B? Damon B. Flowers Building.
Plant operations.
Planting, yes. We're going to take plant operations off.
Oh.
Because a lot of other, there are, the entrepreneurship center is there, and we have some other things. So that's the recommendation.
Do we need this approval?
I've already, it's very humble, he's a very humble man.
Well, I'm all for it.
I'm all for it. Do you? Yeah.
I'm just really happy that in all these blue sheets of paper we've had for buildings and things, there was nothing about parking lots. And I really wish you that.
We should name a parking.
And maybe, no, we can't name a parking lot, but that's my almost cynical way of saying thank you for being a friend and a good steward for Washoe Community College.
Any other comments or questions? Do you have, do you want to add anything else, President? Okay. All right.
This motion will be next, at the next meeting.
I would, I know there's kind of a sense that we should do it now, but we're missing two of our trustees.
That's a very good point.
And as President Flowers is going to be there to present stuff at the retreat.
Makes more sense.
I'd like everybody here to be able to have their vote registered in favor of it.
Thank you.
I agree. Yep.
All right. Well, with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move that we adjourn.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned.